Welcome everyone to our December meeting, our last meeting of 2020. And we've asked our principal, Ms. Penny Arthur, if she would come and open to the word prayer and listen to pledge allegiance.
Thank you, Penny, pray. Dear heavenly fathers, thank you for this evening and thank you for the opportunity to come and glorify your name. Father, as we go about this meeting tonight, let us be mindful of why we're here. Lord, help us keep this our heart and to keep students at the forefront of every action that we do, not just tonight, Lord, but every day. And in the days ahead, heavenly father, I just ask that you give us the strength in your joy. Fill us, let your spirit guide us, and may your love surround us tonight and each and every night as we try and do our best for students. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, and free and just for all.
Thank you, Dr. Arthur. Next on the agenda, we have our consent items consisting of the agenda, minutes of the November 10, 2020 meeting, policies for revision, J D's discipline, and J G C A physical examinations. Got a motion to approve the consent items? By Mr. Hyman?
Say.
By Mr. Madison. All in favor? opposed?
Upstake.
Four. Zero. We have Mr. Denise Freeman.
Sit down there.
Not for me?
Good. Mr. Chair, to everybody that's attending, I think I will feel better if I stand up. I'd like to say that this is been four years of thrill and bliss, and I want to thank the board members, but most of all, I want to thank the staff, the students, and my constituents in District One for their love, their support, and their kindness. And I wanted to tell this little short story, and I have somebody who can attest and witness to it. Four years ago, I was tending to my mom. My mom was leaving us, so when I got the call on Thursday that they couldn't find anyone to run for this board seat, I said, "Look, guys, I love y'all in Lincoln County, but I ain't doing nothing that takes me away from my mother. She needs me." And they said, "Well, Reverend Freeman, would you please consider it?" They called me, I believe it was on Thursday. I told them I'd give them an answer by Thursday afternoon, and I looked over to my mom, and I said, "Mom, these people crazy. They don't fill and bump their head." And she says, "Denise, when people ask you and you feel like they need you, go. God will make the path straight." So I came on Friday, I qualified, and I told Ms. Bolton, "If anybody comes in here and they qualify, can I get my money back?" She said, "Sure." So one person came, they didn't live in the district. The other person came, they hadn't lived here long enough, and so I got what I asked God for, to let me run unopposed, so it wouldn't interfere or interrupt with the care of my mom. Well, that June, I lost my mom. And that was something extremely hard, because I'm the second of 10 children, and my mom was like my next breast, Dr. Gumby. And so I was having my first granddaughter. Why wasn't having her in this country? She was all the way in Japan. So that August, I had to fly for three months to Japan and stay with my daughter-in-law and my son as they brought their beautiful baby girl into the world. And I say that to say this, I'm happy to believing, I'm sad because of all the trickery that I feel was played, because I never had time to really grieve my mom. So now I can take my time, reflect on the good days, because I've been bombarded with all this craziness. And my other mom's sitting back there. She taught in this system for over 40 years. I met her the first year I moved to this area, and she stuck by me like glue, her and her husband, and I thank God that she thought it not robbery to be here with me tonight at my last board meeting since my husband's out of town. But I want y'all to understand, it was a privilege to serve. I don't stand for the pledge, because I never have. My mom taught us as little children, we don't pledge to a lie. There is not liberty and justice for all. But if you guys want to pledge, that's up to you. And I know that you use that in your campaign, but understand, would you have used it if I was Jehovah Witness? I'm a Christian.
Ms. Freeman?
And I'm almost finished.
Well, you're over your three minutes.
I'm almost finished.
Okay.
I've been here four years. Give me a break. And so I'm used to their weakness. So it's been a privilege to serve, and it hasn't been easy, because I ask questions, and I don't apologize for that. Because my thing is, if you want to serve and do your job to the best of your ability, you question when you don't know. You question and not make assumptions. You question, because this is not about you as individuals. This wasn't about me. I was here to serve every one of the citizens of District One. And if I failed, I'm sorry, but I think I did a good job. That was my purpose, that was my goal, that was my aim. And I wanted to stand tonight to say this, to pass the torch to you, Kyle, to pass the torch, and to say that people in District One deserve leadership. They deserve someone who's going to answer the phone and talk to them. They deserve someone who's going to represent all of them, young, old, black, white, rich, poor. They don't deserve someone who's going to be in a clique and do things just to fit. So you got some big shoes to fill. Fill them well. Don't go along to get along. Do what's right. I remember you made a call to me years ago about your son, and as your board member, I did everything I could to assist you and your mom back then. So you be the kind of board member that I demonstrated to you back then. Have an open door policy. Question things. Ask questions. You might not be right, but that's all right. You represent District One, and I'm your constituent now, and I'm going to hold your feet to the fire. And that's a good thing, not a bad thing, not a negative thing. But I will say this, if you need me to explain something or just to run something by, I know you won't call, but I want to publicly say I'm available. God bless you all, and thank you. Jason?
Thank you. Next on the agenda is financials. Ms. Kate.
All right. We're starting with the general fund, and we are at 41.66% of our fiscal year complete through the end of November. You can see that we're at 31.97% on our revenues. They're always, as I told you last month, a little bit low till we get all our tax money in, but that's very reasonable for this time of year. Our general fund expenditures were 38.79%, so that is looking good compared to that 41. We keep it all our expenditures in line. I don't have any of those that look out of order. Couple of them are a little bit higher just because of first-of-the-year payments that we have to make, which will even out towards the end of the year. As far as our cash in the bank, we've got about 1.7 million in the bank at the end of November. Our fund equity is 1.018 million, so that is about where we take it to be at this time of year. Next page is just the summary showing that we started with a 2.375 in the fund balance. We've down to 1.018 in the fund balance. On our SLOSS collections, a little bit low compared to last month, but high compared to last year, 59,348.88. So we are still above our budget each year. I looked back, last year this time, we collected 284,276, so we're ahead of our last year's collections at this point in the year. For our summaries, you can see we've got a balance of 301,280.4 in SLOSS account, bond accounts, 372,068.74, so that gives us 673,000 towards the 1.14 million that's due in April, or April 1st, we actually paid in March. And on our capital projects, we've gathered up 52,000. There are other Whipple projects as we did. We have not allocated any projects to that yet.
Any questions for Ms. Bofford?
Yes.
Go ahead, Ms. Freeman.
On the abhorrent tax, it says 75.4%.
Yes, on the T A V T, that is the car tag, tax.
Right.
Yes.
That's the car, right?
Right.
Okay.
And we talked about that, that we've probably got to bump that budget up a little bit, because we're collecting more on that than we expected. People apparently are buying new cars. I think they wouldn't be right now, but apparently they are, because that's what that is.
Okay.
That's just new cars.
Now, right, right. Now, well, is it just new cars, or are there also cars that have to still pay abhorrent tax, the older?
I think it's both. I think it's both.
The older cars as well.
If it's, if you bought it before this tax went in, you're still paying the birthday tax.
But if you go and buy a used car now, like if I bought a used car.
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, that's correct. If you went and buy one now, yeah, that's correct. It's just if you still own the one that you had before that time.
Right. But I know cars that was paying abhorrent tax before the law or still paying abhorrent taxes when they buy their tags.
Correct. That's when they, that's what they call the birthday tax.
Right. So that's still in here, correct?
Yes.
All right.
That is up in the top in the local abhorrent tax.
So the bottom one is just new cars.
Just new cars.
Got you. How are we doing on tax collection, as far as you receiving?
Well, we're, we have an advance. We've not actually gotten the full amount for November, so I don't really know.
How, I didn't hear you.
We got an advance on the October, November taxes. We do not have the full amount exactly, so I'm not sure.
What was the advance?
400 and something thousand.
438, I don't remember the exact number.
438,000?
Yeah.
And that came from the tax commissioner?
Yes, ma'am.
But that's not shown in the numbers we're looking at right now?
It should be.
That's in the local abhorrent tax.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
So the 400 is in addition, that's part of that 618, is what you're saying?
Well, we've got two around 400,000. So there's one in October and one in November.
So you got two?
So the November one is not in there. You put, I'm sorry, we got one in November, we got one in December. I'm in the wrong month here. So we do have 400,000 more than this is showing.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. And that advance came in December then?
Yes.
Okay.
And how much was in November?
It was also around 400,000. That's why I was getting the two figures confused. But this is as of the end of November, so one of those is not in there.
It was one other thing I'll be with. I see that student transportation is the lowest number on page number two, fourth from the bottom.
Uh huh.
Is that because of what?
Probably because we have a school bus in there that we have bought, and that's a big chunk of that.
One we have not bought?
Well, we got it on order, but we haven't received it, so we haven't paid for it.
So you haven't paid for it?
Right.
So cash on hand is 1.7?
Yes, ma'am.
And when you have investments, is that like CDs?
Yes.
What other kind of investments do we have?
Just CDs, that's all. CDs is all.
Just CDs?
Mm-hmm.
And that's what Farmers State or with Farmers and Merchant?
The CDs are with Farmers and Merchants, the general account and several of the other accounts are with Farmers State. We try to kind of split it between the two.
I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
We try to split it between the two banks, so we've got CDs at the Farmers and Merchants Bank, and we've got the general fund, and a lot of the principals' accounts are at the Farmers State Bank. So it kind of balances between the two of them.
Can I ask you, I guess I'll direct the superintendent, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I mean, Mrs. Superintendent, excuse me, Dr. Light.
Yes, ma'am.
Why do we have, why are we between two banks?
Trying to not put all of our money in one spot and to use the local banks, which supports our local community, so we try and share that wealth between the two banks.
Okay. What's the interest rate that we get on the CDs?
I do not know.
I don't know.
Do you have a special interest rate that you get what any other customer gets?
I don't know that for sure. I would have to look that up. I don't want to fit it to you.
I would say it'd be federally regulated.
So it would be the same?
Yeah, I mean, it'd be federally.
That's what I was thinking, but I wanted to hear it and not assume it. Mr. Chair, that answers all my financial questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Bofford? And next on the agenda, we have a landscaping bid.
Board members, we went through the process of requesting proposals. We contacted individuals that had bid two years ago when we went through this process, and we were surprised that we only received three proposals back. One of the four that attended the mandatory pre-bid meeting decided not to submit a bid. In the process of looking at what we've received and the process of identifying all of the pieces that went into this, I'm going to recommend that we not only reject all of these bids, which is well within our right to do, but on top of that, since we only got three back, we would like to put this on the state procurement website. Now, we're not required to do that, because it's not over 100,000. But if we put it on the state procurement website, which is what we did two years ago, because at that time it was only 10,000 requirement, we got quite a few, as you remember, proposals back. And it's not that I think these proposals are bad, I just want to broaden our scope and make sure that we give everybody an opportunity. We're also going to add shrubbery and trees from the old campus to try and clean that up a little bit as well, to give that an even more specific identification necessary within that bid process. So to add that would be unfair to anybody on this list and would cost us more money. So I'm going to strongly recommend that we go ahead and reject all of these. We have rewritten the, or have worked on rewriting the proposals, put it back out, and then bring it back to you either next month or February at the latest, after we go through and put it on the state website.
Who were we paying per year before?
The bid that won it for two years ago was 30,000 a year, and then we had to add the old campus mowing, because that wasn't on the original bid.
There's a lot of difference there.
Yes.
So who has the bid now?
Right now, it is Trinity Landscaping. But that ends in December.
That ends when?
In December, December 31st.
So what is their current, well, both campuses are on, over by the courthouse and the two here?
I don't remember that exact number. Do you remember that exact number?
We pay them monthly 33.82.
This is, this is what I have an issue with, and you won't have to deal with it after tonight, prayerfully, y'all will not have a call board meeting. But this is, this is agonizing. You bring to us, and I'm not criticizing, yes, I am, you bring to us bids, but you can't answer our question what the previous amount was, but yet you want us to not do something because you say so, and you don't provide adequate documentation or information. And that's frustrating when you have to make these kinds of decisions. We need to know exactly how many dollars are being paid to Trinity for what they're doing. And are they not doing the hedges or the trees or anything?
They are. That was an add-on that we had to add later.
So how much was the add-on?
We're doing, how much per month?
33.82.
That don't tell me what you're paying them a year.
39,600.
Well, how much was the bid?
The bid was 30. I gave you that number.
The bid was 30,000?
30,000, even, yes, ma'am. And then we had to add the old campus.
So what was the bid for the old campus?
99.75.
No, it wasn't. I mean, I know what they're saying, that you're going by the numbers they're giving, but I remember when that came in, it wasn't 99, it was an even number. But thank you for your help. We don't need that.
I asked for it based on federal regulations, I O R R it. It was 30,600 plus 99.75.
So it was 90, say it again, I'm sorry.
30,600.
Would you tell me who you are?
Say that again, please, ma'am.
Would you tell me who you are?
My name is Clayton.
Clayton?
Yes, ma'am.
You work with Trinity?
No, ma'am, I do not.
Oh, okay.
I'm just a...
It's 39, 39.7. 39,700 is what we paid for the last two years.
So what additional, I see the 64, so this I can preface my question. I know you want to add the school over here, correct?
The school over there is already owned.
That's what I thought.
Yes.
So what are we adding over there?
I'm adding the additional definition and description for the shrubbery over there and the trees over there.
So they weren't doing the shrubbery and the trees over there?
Not the way we wanted them done, if they were doing them at all, no.
But it was in the contract?
I don't think it was specific, no.
It was just grass.
It was just grass? But over on the other two campuses, they were doing grass and hedges?
Yes, yes, they were.
Is it time for others to ask a question now?
Yes, go ahead.
It's not like, is there a reason why there's such a tremendous difference in the amounts used in, you know, anything?
To be honest, I don't know how to answer that question. I know the first time that Trinity bid, it was a much higher number than this, but there was also chemicals in that, and we had to remove the chemicals from that and just do the mowing and the hedges and pine straw and that kind of stuff.
Okay.
So the number came down drastically at that point, and he was awarded the bid being the little bid.
Okay. Is he doing a good job?
He is doing a good job, yes, sir.
At 30,000 a year?
Yes, sir.
That's the base?
Right, that's the base.
I remember how we added it all.
Yes.
So the 64th, the new bids include the fertilizing, because they had to be certified?
No, 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 no. There is no...
It's still being done in-house.
Still being done in-house. We're still taking care of all that ourselves.
So why did it go up so much?
I can't answer that question.
The cost of fuel, whatever.
That would be strictly speculation. I can't answer that question.
It's just a big jump from 40,000 to 64,000.
Agreed.
And this is paid out of taxpayers' money, correct?
Yes.
This is paid out of taxpayer's money, correct?
Yes.
Is that a yes, Mr. Chair?
Yes, yes.
Okay. The state in no form or fashion give you money to cut grass? Okay.
Do you have any other questions?
I don't think so. So we're going to revisit it, right?
Ms. Bofford.
No.
Thank you.
So why are we waiting, Mr. Chair? If they have everything and are going to do everything, do we need more than three bids?
We do not have to have more than three bids.
So why are we waiting?
Again, twofold. Number one, we only got three bids. I think we need more than three bids to get a wider scope. Second of all, what we want done over there, we would have to be more specific within the contract and add that to it. I don't think it's fair to add something to a contract after the proposal is made. So I'm requesting that we kill this proposal, kill the whole package, and start over with what I feel is a more accurate description of what we want done at the old campus, and put it on the state procurement website.
Because I remember we have secured and voted on approving bids with three bids, and...
That's correct.
And that's why I am suspect, and I am very transparent, and I will continue to be tonight, but I am suspect at the reasoning, but come next year, when y'all do it, I'll find out, because I don't honestly trust what I'm hearing right now, because it makes no logical sense to me.
20,000 more dollars a year doesn't make sense.
I'm talking about the explanation.
30,000.
30, wrong.
And I'm looking for that myself. I want to know why it costs 30,000 more dollars per year.
Well, I asked a question, but nobody can answer that. It should have been asked when the bids came in, since I see that they had a pre-proposal bid meeting. So it is crazy. But anyway.
Sir, if I may, you have, you do have to take...
Can you identify? I mean, how does it not...
Actually, this is, I mean, it, we've already had public participation. So, thanks.
I'm thinking for about who you are, so...
The, but, but right now, so, I mean, because of the difference that you're seeing, you want to put it on to the...
The state procurement website and be more specific in the definition that we want done at the old school.
Now, with this contract running out in December, is that going to cause a problem not having it approved in January?
I don't believe that's going to be a major problem. We'll just adjust when the cutting starts, and we'll still do it for two years.
Mr. Chair, question, can we ask the current one to do it until you guys make a decision?
I could request that. I can't guarantee that he would accept it, but I could sure request it.
Well, he's going...
Well, I mean, right now, we're in January, so I mean, it's not going to be a lot of press.
It's not going to be a lot, but hedges are growing, depending on what kind you got. I know mine are, but, you know. And this is the right time to prune trees and all that kind of stuff. That's why I said that, because when you get behind and hire a new group and they got to catch up, that's not fair to the new contractor. That's why.
I know when the current contractor took over, it wasn't in real good shape at that point, and he did a very good job of catching up.
Well, if he's doing a good job... You have come to us before and say, "Hey, so-and-so's doing a good job. We just want to recommend that they continue this contract," and we have approved that, but you went through the bid selection process.
That's correct, we did.
And was that because they asked for more money?
I felt the bid...
Because you didn't know they wanted no money, because they hadn't bid it yet, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so right now, you're proposing you will bring it back to us in January?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to table.
Motion to table this until January? Second?
Second motion.
Second by Ms. Bofford. All in favor? No.
Thank you all.
Next on the agenda is the twenty-one, twenty-two school year calendar.
Mr. Chair, let me revisit that. A motion to table means that you guys come back in January and get all these questions answered before Dr. Light can put this out for another bid. That's what tabling does. I just wanted to make that clear. I did motion to suspend, I motioned to table, and it was passed unanimously.
Okay. I print this back up, because I want Dr. Light to act now and move, move the thing so that we will be able to vote on this in January.
As you have said in the past, the vote has been passed, the motion has been passed, second and unanimously approved.
You didn't make yourself clear before you said it.
I said table.
I'll second you, Jason.
You said table.
Table is clarity. Y'all don't know Robert's Rules of Order. Y'all don't know what table is.
We're not smart as you. We haven't been as much as continuing in. Thank you.
Tabling, you tabled this vote, and Dr. Light didn't, I mean, he, he put this together without bringing force before. So he's gonna bring this back to us.
But y'all go to church every Sunday. Y'all know what table it mean? Y'all have conferences? Y'all know Robert's Rules of Order. Don't play that dumb game with me.
We don't fuck the table stuff, Dr. Trump, I'm sorry.
Wait a minute. According to Robert's parliamentary procedure, point of order.
There you go.
Go ahead.
Point of order. According to Robert's Rules of Order, tabling mean, because we just tabled something, look at the minutes. We tabled last month, because I made the motion. So don't sit here and tell me you don't know what it mean. Because we tabled the Randall Edmonds, uh, award thing until January. Because I said it would be better when the new board in January is here, since it was gonna be a long process, and I wanted the person who was coming behind me to be part of that process and not me. None of y'all didn't say that. Y'all didn't know what table it meant?
You, you made the statement.
Don't claim it because.
You made the statement to vote on it in January, and that's what we said.
No, I didn't. I said table. Baby, I got the.
You said table it in January, so the new board can vote on it.
I didn't. It was table.
In January, you're gonna bring back new proposals along with what we have here.
That is my plan, and that's why.
That's what I understood, too. That's what I thought I was voting on.
I make a motion, Dr. Light, for you to bring this back to us in January with new proposals. Second by Ms. Hyden. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you. I don't think it was much.
I oppose. I oppose, because y'all just broke protocol and the law, so I oppose.
All right, next is two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year calendar.
School year calendar was created a little bit differently this year. I requested that each of the district leadership team, which is the three principals, Dr. Gumby, Michael and myself, Michael Williams and myself, all create a calendar separate of each other, bring them together, and out of this group, we would select three that we felt were the best, and then put them out to the employees to vote on. We brought three to the table. The principals took it back to their leadership team and then put it out for all of the teachers to vote, or all of the employees to vote on. We ended up with ninety-one responses or votes. We got forty-six point two percent for option two, which is the one before you that is being recommended. We got forty point seven percent for option one, which was not recommended, and thirteen point two percent for option three, which was not recommended. So going with this new format, it is my recommendation that we accept option two, which is before you on the web pa, or on the screen up there, with forty-six point two percent of the votes of ninety-one responses.
Dr. Light, how much difference was there between the other one that was forty percent?
The other style calendar, the other one had a week of time, uh, for October off and a week of time in, um, January off, or Mar, I think it was March. It was October and March. So it was an additional week off. Was it February? Okay. I knew there was an additional month in there.
Is this the option that won, Dr. Gumby?
It puts you getting out later in the year.
Option two?
I'm sorry.
Does it put you getting out later in the, in the?
This one does. If the other one did, put it out a little bit later.
Okay.
Not much, but.
There were a lot of people that were interested in that one, though, weren't there?
Yes, there were. Yeah, it was forty-six point two percent to forty point seven percent, so it was close.
Can we see option one?
What he was just saying, the, it had a week in October off instead of just the, um, weekend. You said it was a week in February or a week in March?
February. That was the high school period as well.
So we don't have access to option one?
I did not bring it in here because it was not voted or, or approved. I didn't think there was any reason to review all three when only one of them actually got the votes by the employees.
And this is the one you're recommending?
Yes, because this is the one that the employees voted for.
Which this one is the same as the mid-year.
This one's pretty close to the same, yes sir.
Yeah, pretty close.
So how many holidays, how many days out of school is on option two?
How many days out of school? I know.
For how many days for vac, whatever?
I know there's a hundred and ninety school days for teachers there. There's a hundred and eighty school days for students there.
Yeah, I know that too. I just wanted to know the number of vacations, spring break on those days, out of school.
I haven't counted those days because those aren't near as important as the number of school days and the number of teacher days. So I can go through and count those if you would like.
I can't see them. Even with my glasses, I can't see them.
Do you want the days that Christmas included?
Yeah, just if it's three weeks or four weeks or whatever.
He said it's forty-four.
Forty-four.
It meets all the calendar requirements that the state requires us to.
And the last day of school, I think, was May twentieth?
Yes.
And graduation?
Is May twentieth as well.
So.
I make a motion, we accept.
All right, we have a motion to accept this option two, as presented by Dr. Light, sir.
Question?
We have a second by Ms. Hyden. Go ahead.
Question. Uh, do you have any flexibility in this? Because according to the scientists, and they probably don't know my teeth are jammed, so she's still sitting beside me without a mask. But what if COVID strikes?
We would do the same thing that we did this year.
Wait a minute, I haven't finished my question, I'm sorry. What if COVID strikes? And we're like a lot of other school systems, so are you going to, Mr. Chair, are we probably going to go back to complete distant learning if that happens to y'all in January or later this year? And what plans do we have already planned so that it will be successful? That's part one and two that I wanted to ask Dr. Light.
From the calendar standpoint, it would be just like we've done this past year, Miss Freeman. We would make adjustments as need. This is, if we are, we are planning for twenty-one, twenty-two. That's what we're doing right now. But if we have to react because of an issue, then we will react.
Because there have been some questions floating around in DC where they may require schools to open for the summer and have a session in the summer for all students. So that's why I'm trying to get you to think outside the box, because I don't know if y'all have a chance to read up on that or hear that. But that is a part of the national discussion about schools, since so many children have missed, uh, school days and they want to, and because test scores was down a lot. Uh, and so they were looking at that to see as a way to help children get what they lost. Is that a right way of saying that?
If you remember correctly, Ms. Freeman, it was in June and July that this district, more than any other in the area that I could ever find, jumped forward and provided a summer school for our children when nobody else was.
No, but I'm, I'm not talking about summer school. They're talking about a regular school semester, and it won't be called summer school. That's what the language was. I'm not talking about a summer school. They're talking about carrying regular school in case it closes in January or February because of coronavirus and there's a shutdown. That's what they're talking about. So.
Two things in our state eliminate that requirement.
Test scores is one of the things that they cited, uh, and some other issues. But I just wanted to make y'all aware of that. It's no discussion needed.
Thank you.
Um, we can move on.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the proposed calendar? Opposed?
I abstain. I wish you were here, so you tell me this next month. I'm not gonna be here, so.
Next on the agenda is the policy for review A, B, C, D, for member method of election. Oh, did it? I'm sorry, Board of Election appointment.
I was contacted by, uh, Ms. Bolton, who is our representative at the Board of Elections office, and she let me know on December, I'm sorry, she let me know that we have an opening in, starting in January, January one, for the Board of Elections representative for the school district. We started, uh, brainstorming, and I contacted most of you, if not all of you, and talked about, come up with a name, give me an idea. Uh, I talked to a few people. A few people said they weren't interested. A few people said they were very busy. And I ended up talking to Gil Madison, Madison, I'm sorry, and Gil Madison said he would enjoy doing that if the board would have him. So it is my recommendation that the district appoint Gil Mattson to the Board of Elections as the representative for the school district.
Question?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
So you said you contacted all the, of people, the, the names that was given to you?
No, I contacted some of the names. I did not contact everyone. No, I did not.
Mr. Chair, question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, this is the first time this has been done handled by our superintendent. Usually, the superintendent would tell the board and the board would make a recommendation, and not the superintendent had nothing to do with this. But according to the Lincoln County Board of Elections board meeting, Ms. Cavett, who's here, would you stand up, Ms. Cavett? Ms. Cavett was elected to be reinstated to the Board of Elections, and I'll let somebody from the audience who's not scared of me. Uh, Deek, would you read the date on these minutes? Right there?
Date on this? Time start?
Right there. That's it. The date of the election meeting.
Thursday, December twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen.
Two thousand seventeen.
Yeah.
Um, and present was Gregory Zellers, Dr. Gumby, and Mike Seigler. Uh, Torinthea Harris was the secretary, Levenda Bolton, uh, is the director. Now, we did not, and I, like I told Dr. Light, these are four-year terms. Ms. Hess was reappointed in twenty-seventeen, so that means her time does not expire until twenty-twenty-one, December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Now, Dr. Light said that Ms. Bolton told him it was three-year terms. I have appointed people to this board before. When I was the Democratic Party Chair, I reappointed Ms. Dr. Gumby to that board. As a board member on this board, I've also had the pleasure of reappointing with the, on unanimous consent of the board, Ms. Cavett. The other thing is, nobody contacted Ms. Cavett. Usually, if your appointment is up or gone, you get a letter, you get something. That was not done, because her time is not up. Ms. Cavett, when were you reappointed to this election board?
How is everybody doing?
Hey, Ms. Cavett.
Hi, Ms. Cavett.
I was reappointed when you came back on, but I was already on through Ms. Mason, and I was appointed when you was on the board. So my time is not supposed to be there. You stay four years each time that someone appoints you. So my time is not up. And no one mentioned it to me that my time was up. I just heard that a letter came to Dr. Light that my time was up. I don't like backstabbers. God doesn't like backstabbers. So let's do this right. Now, next year, December thirty-first, will be my time up. Is that right? Is that the way you've been doing it?
Not, not according to our records. You were actually appointed in December of two thousand sixteen to begin in January of two thousand seventeen.
Wouldn't it just go down?
Which is, which is the exact time that Ms. Freeman was on the board, beginning January two thousand seventeen. So seventeen, January eighteen, January nineteen, January twenty is four years. Which is the exact same one that she's on.
You can't count that first year. You gotta count a year.
Helen Cavett was reassigned to the Board of Education.
You go through, you go.
She has served four years, and according to our records, she has served the exact same four years.
I, I started January of, of that year when she came out.
So did Ms. Freeman, started in January, on the exact same four years, the exact same term.
What, no, no, sir. She was reappointed.
I was reappointed.
No, but it should be in our minutes.
It is.
So, I mean, that's, we need to look at our minutes.
It is.
And, well, I mean, that's what, we need to have our minutes.
I mean, I voted on the first meeting I was over here. I know who it was.
I did too.
It was when I came in and Ms. Freeman came in.
You came in when?
My first meet was January of seventeen.
January seventeen?
Mm-hmm, and I've, I'm beginning my four-year term as a board member right now.
She was appointed in December. Her term started in January twenty-eighteen, guys, so let's be real. She was appointed December of twenty-seventeen. Her new term, and I'll speak slowly, started twenty-eighteen. Four years from twenty-eighteen, sir, is twenty-twenty-one.
And Ms. Freeman, if you're correct, that's fine.
I am correct.
It is, I'm not basing off of this minutes. It needs to be off of our minutes when we voted her on. And that's what I want to see.
This is December thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, which I actually read to Ms. Freeman when she was talking to me on the phone and telling me that I couldn't count. On a motion by Mr. Fogarty, seconded by Mr. Cox, in unanimous vote, Helen Cavett was reappointed for a four-year term as a Board of Education representative on the Board of Elections, which would be December thirteenth of sixteen. So she would start in seventeen, which is the exact same term that Ms. Freeman is on.
No, it's not.
Why was she reappointed if her term wasn't up?
Her term came up. I don't know where those minutes, but the ones I found at my house, and I'll bring them back and produce them because somebody done played the money business.
Actually, actually Lynn Odom handed me these minutes.
Dr. Light?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you say, uh, December thirteenth?
December thirteenth, two thousand sixteen. Yes, ma'am.
Two thousand sixteen.
Sixteen, yes, ma'am. So you would have started on January one in two thousand seventeen of a four-year term, which is the exact same term that Ms. Freeman's on.
Dr. Light, her term was not mine, because when she was first appointed, I had been here some years. But what I'm saying is, if you add, if you add up her four-year term, she has another year. I don't care how you slice it, dice it.
It's okay. It's okay. But were y'all gonna notify me?
Obviously not.
That's Ms. Bolton. That's right. Ms. Bolton called me.
But it's not Ms. Bolton's job. This is a job that we've never gone through.
It is Ms. Bolton's job, because she's in charge of the election.
Our former superintendents never went through the election office. They kept it on a calendar. They told us months before when it was gonna come up, and we. And we, the board, chose. It wasn't a search committee by employees, it was done by the board.
And I have talked to board members about, as I said.
You never said a word to me, not a mumbling word.
I did talk to you about it, because you told me that I couldn't count.
When I heard about it, Dr. Light, let's tell the truth, it's shaming the devil. I called you because I heard about it at the street committee. And that's when you told me, but you did not call me and make me part of the process. So you're lying.
No, I didn't lie.
Yeah, you're lying, baby.
Ms. Freeman, I voted, I voted on Ms. Cavett twice. In my 10 years here, I, I voted for her twice. And when you say the superintendent reached out ahead of time, superintendent told us at that meeting, this is up, Ms. Cavett, that time she'd already served once.
I'm talking about this time. I'm not talking about previous. I'm talking about this time.
You said the other times the superintendent said, reached out months ahead. Superintendent, they should talk about it at that meeting. Ms. Cavett has done this. Do we want to reappoint her? Yes, we reappoint her. Last time, Ms. Cavett's done this, we want to reappoint her. Yes, let's reappoint her. It was done at a meeting. I'm not sure what you were talking about in the past.
Well, uh, uh, Jason, I, I beg your pardon and I, I differ, because I know what I know. So, if you add up the years, you're cheating her a year, and this was done disrespectfully. She was not notified. And if she doesn't resign from her unexpired term.
I think it's a policy, what years we appoint them. I don't think.
It's every four years.
Yeah, it's 17, 18, 19, 20.
Sure.
She did come, you appointed her in 20.
It says 16, December 16.
16.
No.
Yeah, it was.
Well, if y'all appointed her 2016.
16. Yeah, ma'am, it was.
Well, it says right here, Ms. Levenda Bolton contacted our office for questioning a representative for the Board of Education.
She did.
Miss, Miss Helen, Ms. Cavett, please, Mr. Chair, I'd like.
Ms., Ms. Cavett.
I am so sorry.
Are you wanting to continue to serve in the Board of Elections?
Do I want to?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'll continue. That, then nobody asked me.
But, but that is something that you desire to keep doing?
Yes.
In the, in the Board of Elections?
Yes.
Okay. The, uh, the, we have heard from Ms. Cavett. The, uh, do we need to, do we need to look and verify through the Board of Elections in even further minutes to verify when the first time that Ms. Cavett, because it, like you said, it's four-year terms? I mean, this, this was the last time that we approved her. Can we go back four years before that and verify that that? And does Ms., Ms. Bolton, does she set, set it up? I mean, is, is her appointment at the same time that we do? Or do they meet? I don't even know how often they meet.
Dr. Gumby's actually on the election.
Well, she is too. She's the chair.
We meet once, we meet once a month.
Okay. And that's all year long?
Yes, you know, sometimes we are skipped, and then, uh, if we, like, on an election, we make that our meeting whenever the, uh, we, uh, have the election. We meet on Thursdays, the last Thursday of the month.
So, it, okay.
So at your last meeting, they didn't have a discussion about your term ending then? Was there any discussion about your term ending?
No.
There was no discussion at that meeting?
No.
Before she got there, the question was asked, 'cause I attended. Uh, were you there when I asked that?
Yes, so.
Yeah, and the Secretary of the Board stated that Ms. Hess's, uh, term was up in 20, December of 2021. And that was the Secretary of the Election, and I was there, Dr. Gumby was there, um, and so that's when her term is up, according to election minutes. And I got the minutes from the election board. They're not something I typed up, because I didn't know who was, be present, who wasn't. But, uh, it says that you were pres, uh, present, Don Prey, I mean, Gregory and Mr. Seigler.
Not Seigler.
It's Seigler, right?
Mr. Allen, James Allen.
No, no, I mean in the 2017.
Oh, yeah, Seigler was on the board at the time.
Dr. Gumby?
Yes.
When are all the other Board of Elections, um, appointed?
It's staggered, so.
Every year or every other year?
I think it's every, every two years, I think, when we, um, got it, got it under control that way. Now, I had an emergency, so I was waiting till Ms. Cavett came, but before Ms. Cavett came, we discussed officers. And then we discussed, uh, three of us, two of us are coming off, and then I think it was mentioned that, uh, Ms. Cavett was coming off. And I think there was a, a question from the floor at that time saying, uh, maybe she was not coming off the floor, so we were gonna get clarification. And then we got clarification from, I don't have my minutes from 16, but then I did see the board policy that stated that Ms. Cavett was appointed by this board in December of 2016. And so you served all of 17, all of 18, all of 19, and then all of 20, which is your four years.
Well, according to your minutes, and your cousin Gregory Zellers was chairperson, and signed these minutes, and y'all approved them. It says that you guys got it from the Board of Education, and they had reassigned Helen Cavett. December 22, 2017 was the date of your board meeting, that the three men attended. So, y'all, uh, 'cause you requested a copy of the new policy, and we requested a policy for community-wide pay scale or something, I don't know what that was about. But, uh, I requested these minutes and was able to receive them because of the confusion. And I would ask this board, because this was not done right, because somebody should have contacted. Um, I've served on many boards for the county commissioners and the county, and they've always contacted me when my term was up and asked, "Do you wanna serve? Do you wanna go? Or we got somebody else?" And that was good. It wasn't a slam bam, "Thank you, ma'am", knock in the face. And I think on the way this was done, that Ms. Helen Cavett, and I will make this in the form of a motion, should serve out her term, which is December 31, 2021.
Thank you.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I need to make, I wanna make an addendum to what you're saying.
I'm listening.
Okay. You're saying that, um, because of the minutes that we have on the table, one is saying that it was 2016, and she has stated that she does not want to resign from her current position. So I motion that, I mean, I wanna make an addendum to the motion, that you're saying that we let her continue her term, and the new term.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, may I amend my motion?
No, I mean, we, you have a motion.
She, she has a second again. She questioned me to amend. I would like to amend it.
Well, no, she was doing the addendum to it.
No, she didn't second. She said, "I'd like to add an amendment", so I amend the motion to say that Ms. Helen continues to serve for another term. Uh, so Ms. Bartell, I put it in the language that.
Well, she stated that she did not wanna step down from her position, and you all said in the past that the board elected the person, um, to, you know, in that position, so why not, why can't tonight, we just go ahead and vote on? He, he, he presented us with the person, um, however, the person is already in the position, if she's doing a great job and she doesn't wanna step down, then why should we ask her to step down?
The, and, and that's, I mean, if that's, if that's the motion, that, that's fine. The, uh, but, and that's your second, you second in that motion?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a second for Ms. Helen to not only finish, but be appointed for the next term. Any discussion on that?
How long has she been serving?
You've served for 12 years, right?
How long have I been?
Yes.
Um, it's been 12, it might be, it might be 16. I've been, I've been waiting with the board for a long time. I waited on the board, over on the, while Virginia was there, and I waited there while Kevin was there. So I've been there for a while.
You're the current chairman?
Uh.
Did you mention you were the current chairman?
I'm the current chairman now.
Ms., Ms. Helen, I mean, personally, I, I know you, well, you know me.
Yes.
I thank you for your service on it. Uh, me personally, I think that it's, it's time to get someone younger in, and I just.
Young don't have anything to do with it.
Well, I see things with computer technology, technology skills, and just when, when I've been up there on, I, I, and I, let me rephrase that. More technology skills, and, and that's what I'm looking for in what we propose, I mean, 'cause when I see things that it's taken so long with our elections, and, and that's some of the things that, that I wanna see with our next board.
Mr. Chair, before, before Ms. Hess speaks, let me say.
Hold on a minute. What you were saying, it takes so long with our election. What, give me a second.
Ms., I mean, that is, that's what I'm, I'm looking for in our next appointment. And, and I'm, my, my terminology, I should rephrase things, but I'm looking for someone that can, we, we just had, and, and I don't know that Lincoln County had a lot of issues, but we've had a lot of issues with elections. And I'm just looking, and when, when I vote for my next one, if you're still, if you still have another year, and we find that you have another year, so be it. But as far as to approve for the next one, I'm gonna be looking for, that we look in maybe some other directions. And we appreciate, and I know at least the 12 years you've served, um, and it may be more than that.
I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. Let me just say this to you all. I work over at Food Line. I'm a cashier. I get good customer service. That is what you should look for, someone who can give you customer service. This is what we need. Now, it's not all about computers. You can learn computers. I learn computers. It is customer service. We need to learn how to treat people. That is what you should be looking for.
Character.
'Cause it, it's not all about that. See, I'm so glad that I'm over in Stop Hell Line working. Those people appreciate me very much. Yes, I am old. And we are, we, we all know the way. That's what people wanna do now, is just kick old people to the side. But it's not gonna happen. And I thank you for voting for me all the other time. And you know, it doesn't matter what y'all vote for me tonight or whatever, I'm still gonna work with our election. One thing about it, can't nobody stop me from dri, driving my car. And I'm always ready to election.
But, Mr., Mr. Chair, let me say this. I don't know what your ideology of election board members are, but they do not touch the computer. It's illegal. They don't touch the computer. There is a state guy that comes from the state.
Yeah.
Who's the tech guy. Correct me if I'm lying.
You're right.
He's the tech guy, and only that man can touch the computer. So I sit here and hear you wrap all this stuff off, and then you come call somebody. Oh, you better pray to God that you live to get her age.
Amen.
You better pray to God that when you get that age, you'll still be in your right mind. You better pray to God and hope when you get that age, you still wanna service and serve your community. Now, you got a woman back there. You got some newbies coming on. They don't know nothing. She been to school to Savannah. Tell them if I'm lying, Dr. Gumby, since they believed you over me. Am I lying? Do y'all not go to training?
Yeah.
So y'all are trained by the State of Georgia Secretary of State. Am I correct?
We have trainers.
Do y'all not sit there and listen, just like we, board members do, when we go to our training? So, she's been to training. They got two new people coming on. You need to keep two of the elders, 'cause then you got Mr. James, who just came on last year. He just been there for, what, a year? Then you got Ms. Nancy Engle leaving. You got Dr. Gumby leaving. So you only got two seasoned veterans there. I don't know if Gregory leaving. He's staying. So you just got Gregory and Ms. Hess. Now, if you keep getting rid of the old and put some young folks up there, they gonna mess up just like.
Yeah.
Right him.
Yeah.
Like, right him.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. All in favor of Ms. Cavett being, continuing and being appointed for another term? Put your hand. Oppose? Dr. Light, I would recommend that you get all of the, uh, minutes from the first one and find out why the Board of Elections minutes are different than our minutes.
I will meet with Ms. Bolton tomorrow.
And find out what kind of term it would be.
I will meet with Ms. Bolton tomorrow, but I thought we had that straight. I really did, 'cause we talked to her about that.
Now, we got one black board member. We've tried to keep that board equal. At least have one, two, or three. Now we down to one black Board of Election member. That ain't right. It ain't right. Ms. Hess, I'll appoint you from my other position.
We, y'all, well, but you all.
These people crazy. You gonna call somebody old.
Approve her, but we have not approved.
We have not approved anybody else, right?
Yeah.
Because we need to know.
So what do we do, table it, let him investigate it?
Well, I'll get him, bring him back next month.
And if we need to have Ms. Bolton here to.
I will invite her, allow the question.
To find out what the difference is, please do. Policy for Review, A B C D For Member Method of Election.
This policy is fine as written and as accurate as written, so that one does not need to be adjusted. The next policy down is Working Conditions. If you remember, we had that brought before us last month. There was a request for an adjustment on that policy, so I have adjusted that policy, brought it back. And it states, chronic tardiness will be reported on the employee's evaluation and may result in his or her pay being docked a half day.
How many days is considered chronic? You have chronic. What's chronic? Define it. Is it one day, two day, three days, five days? What?
Chronic tardiness will be based on the evaluator's estimation of what is chronic and how it affects the school. That'll be based on the principal's decision, or if I'm the evaluator, on my decision.
So what if one principal says three days when they evaluate, and another one say it needs, yeah, you know, but, I'm just gonna show them. It's sad. This is sad.
I have a question.
Uh, I'm sorry?
Because, but, they won't define chronic tardiness. It could be one principal could think it's three days, another principal could think it's five. We as a board need to put it in black and white and say what it is, so they know when to start looking for chronic tardiness.
So what, what day should that be, Ms. Freeman?
What, how many days?
Yes, ma'am.
With all the stuff they done done, I think you should get rid of the whole green line and call it a blessing that they still hear teaching. I think it's an insult to injury. I think it's wrong to even have that in there. You gonna dock their pay, and they put in all these hours. Even when they go to the house, they still answering the phone? I was at the last board meeting. Ms. Arthur, tell me if I'm lying. We were out there talking. Did a teacher not call you because a parent called them? And wasn't it after the board meeting, 'cause we were getting ready to leave? So they were still on the clock, wasn't they? So what you gonna charge them tardy and dock their pay for a half a day?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll say, we hadn't had a problem in forty-two years, nineteen seventy-eight, with the first one. I don't know why we went back and changed it to the green right there myself. We hadn't had any problems, the principal said last month, they hadn't had any problems.
Right.
So why are we messing with it?
Because somebody want to get somebody?
Want to get somebody.
Well, man, I'll explain it to you later, Jim. You on the road, keep going, you on the road.
All right, let's move on. Last month, well, this is, I mean, if there's gonna be an issue, because this will be, this will be voted for approval next month, either.
So it'll lay on the table for thirty days?
Yeah, I mean, it's gonna lay on the table for thirty days, so whatever issues we have with it, we need to bring it out. All right, next one for revision is working conditions.
That's when we just talked.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's what we just did.
The superintendent's report. Okay. Superintendent's report, informational items.
This is an information item, just trying to share with the board and the community some of the great things that are going on in our schools, and I truly believe there is a ton of great things going on in our schools. Our eighth graders in Ms. Bryant's Georgia Studies class will participate in a panel discussion with judges from both trial level and appellate courts in Georgia on Bill of Rights Day, that day is December fifteenth. The Judicial Council Administrative Offices of the Courts is organizing the online event via Zoom with a live stream through the Judicial Council of Georgia's YouTube channel. Students submit questions to the Judicial Council, and from that group of questions, the judges select five students, selected five students from LCMS to participate in the question-and-answer session, along with students from three other schools in the state of Georgia, in the entire state. The submitted questions are related to the Bill of Rights, being a judge, or the career path on becoming a judge. This is quite an honor for our children, I wanted to bring it forth and not only applaud them, but also applaud our teachers that are teaching them and doing such a super job. So, again, thank you for all that you do for our students, and thank you, teachers, for all that you do.
Good job. Next on the agenda is executive session.
Mr. Chair, may I ask what we're meeting on in executive session?
Personnel.
Hiring?
The personnel information.
Make a motion during the executive session.
Have a second by Mr. Hyatt.
Mr. Chair, I want to ask you a question. Parliament said, I just want to ask you a quick question before this starts, right quick. The question is, Mr. Matheson that y'all want to appoint is the brother of the young man that sit beside me, correct? So if that's his brother, and we just went through this whole procedure, then he should have not voted on anything, and that would have been two to two, because whether it was tabled, or whether it's going to the next step, since he knew it affected him, because it's his brother, he shouldn't have voted in either motion.
I disagree.
Because that's, I don't care what you disagree, that's Robert's rules of order.
It is not, he voted on what was presented, and what was presented had nothing to do with his brother.
All right, we'll see what the ethics commissions has to say.
I'm sure.
We'll see what Georgia Ethics has to say. Don't mess with the video.
We have, Dr. Light, the superintendent has recommended, and I make a motion, that we accept, that we appoint Ms. Faith Campbell as a substitute teacher for the twenty twenty twenty-one school year.
Some of.
Second by Mr. Madison, all in favor? And also just like to make a point of record, that last month, we approved.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, in October, we approved an extended-day addition for Ms. Molly Spurlock, and at that point, the amount was reported incorrectly. It should be that she's being paid one thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars and eight cents additional every nine weeks. Anything further?
Mr. Chair, may I? Mr. Chair, I hope that you guys will do the right thing, because you're trying to, the obvious is showing. Now, Ms. Cavett, and I'm gonna say this, is well-qualified to stay on that board. Now, with all the racial stuff going on in the country, why do you want four white board members and only one black? Why not two? And that's what Ms. Cavett would bring. And Mr. Hyattman, that might not be important to you, Leroy, that might be not important to you, Jim, that might not be important to you, but we represent Lincoln County, and every board in Lincoln County should reflect its constituents. And Lincoln County is not ninety percent white and ten percent black. Every board should have compatible representation on it. And if Mr. Matheson is gonna resign, because I didn't know family members could be on the Board of Election if some of their family were elected officials, so I will be checking that statute out as well.
Please, please let me.
But, no, I won't let you know, I'll be gone after the night, baby, I let you know nothing, you find out when the subpoena come, or whatever, I don't care. But the thing about it is, the thing about it is.
We're together, Ms. Freeman, this is one county. You saying one thing, and then you turn around.
You said we're together?
I'm together with this whole county, including you, if you want to be on that bus with me.
Mr. Hyattman, do you want me to be honest?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.